Just got to call the meeting to order at 6:30. My glasses aren't so I, you know. Okay, now welcome to the meeting of Howard's Board Appeals on this date, July 31st, 2024. The purpose of this meeting is to hear and decide applications before the Board of Appeals, which have been brought pursuant to the bylaw of the town of Howard's in the Massachusetts Zoning Enabling Act. As required by law, the town may audio or video record this meeting, which we are. Any person intending to either audio or video record this open session is required to form the chair. During this meeting, the chair will recognize promptly a member of the board, the secretary, the attorneys presenting the case to inform the chair if a protocol is not being followed. While in open session, those wishing to present comments or ask questions regarding the case are requested to fill out information form on the podium to the left, okay? Of course, those presenting the case will come to the desk in the front, okay? I'd like to have the board members introduce themselves. Tim?
Tim Bailey.
David Nuttall.
Alexander Donahue.
Brian Solon.
John August.
Kenneth Dixon.
Okay, and I believe that everyone who's here is probably here for a case being heard that it hasn't been continued, but in case you stopped me by, the first two cases are saving for two, we have to read them in, of course, for 22 Ocean Ave and 339 Queen Anne Road, continuances will, you know, continuances will be requested. So those meetings will be held in the August meeting, okay, in case you're here for that. And on that note, I'd like to have the clerk call the first case.
Case number 2024-1322, Ocean Avenue LLC. Property located 22 Ocean Ave, assesses map, 4B parcel L10 in the RH2 zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit on the alternative of variance of 32554 nonconforming structures and uses, and 325 attachment to Table 2 area regulation, and the alternative of area regulation to construct a new shed pursuant to the Howard's zoning bylaws 32554 and 52 and Massachusetts law 48, Section 10 and 6. I have a letter here from attorney Norcross, who represents the property owner. He says, "On behalf of the applicant, 22 Ocean Ave LLC, I am writing respectfully requesting continuance of the above referenced application until the board's, until the board's September 25 meeting. My client is still in the process of determining a feasible alternative location for the shed, and I have a vacation planned." You don't need to know all that either.
Where's he going? Didn't say. Okay. So, you know, the, a continuance was signed at the June, actually, June, uh, June meeting, and, uh, which is good for 180 days. So, uh, he has until up to 180 days to continue the meeting. So we'll see him in September. Okay. You read the next case, please?
All right, case number 2024-15 Flying Horse Equestrian LLC, through their attorney, William D. Kroll. Property located at 339 Queen Anne Road, assesses map 59 parcel P3 in the RH zoning district. The applicant seeks a special decision, appeal of decision, or refusal of permit application the building official, from the building official, and/or special permit in the alternative of variance 325 attachment to Table 2 area regulations, to construct a new building pursuant to the Howard's zoning bylaws 32554-52 and MGL Chapter 48, Section 3, 6, and 10. Requesting continuance until, um, let's see, what do we have for D here?
He's going for the August meeting.
August meeting.
So, at this moment, I believe it'll be August. Anyways, I have a continuance agreement, which attorney Donovan has signed, and I'd like to make a motion that, uh, will you accept the continuance? Can I have a second?
Aye.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we will nail, I mean, email or phone view the continuance to attorney Donovan and attorney Kroll's office. Here. Al, could you read in the next case?
Case number 2024-17, Jeannie McKenzie through Derek Bloom, 784 Tremont Street, Boston. properties located 11 Pilgrim Road, assesses map, parcel, map 7, parcel C3 in RH zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit or any alternative, uh, special, uh, special permit for 32554 nonconforming structures and uses, 32554, 325 attachment to Table 2 area regulation to construct in addition to a preexisting nonconforming single-family dwelling pursuant to Howard's zoning bylaws 32554 and Massachusetts general law, Chapter 48, Section 6.
Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay, why don't you come forward, please, and, once you, there's four of you, so feel free to pull up another chair.
We have a few in the front row.
All right, so, feel free to please, you know, pull up some chairs to the front. There's no rush here, guys.
Thank you. Appreciate that. We have copies of a survey that's been stated, but for sure.
Oh, excellent. Okay.
They're all the time. You all can just.
Yes, if you could, appreciate it.
Thank you.
This is in the, we have now.
We won't hold that against you.
I now want to give you the chart.
But that's, that's your first warning. See, we do. Thank you. Ken's gonna pull his cards. He doesn't, he doesn't want to see a strikeout.
Thank you.
Part of that survey is the chart, which.
First of all, can you hold on a second, please? No, I appreciate that. I'd like to ask the applicant to introduce yourselves, and those who are going to be assisting in their presentation.
So, I'm Jeannie McKenzie.
Okay.
Brian McKenzie.
Thank you.
I'm Sarah with Bloom, Sarah Hanscom.
Okay.
And Derek Bloom.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
So we will be talking through plans, and we're all here for whatever Q and A follows. Um, this is a preface, so the, the new site plan, we're supposed to go, they do not have the chart. The chart on it differed from the chart that we had on our previous cover sheet, so we could disregard the Bloom chart, because the survey was at, surveyed figures where we didn't. So, take you through the project. So the project, you know, overall, there's a renovation project being planned through different parts of the house, but the, but the zoning relevant component is on the left side as you approach from the structure. There's a current covered porch with columns that we're proposing to enclose and make it interior condition space. That part is in the setback. Um, we've been through Conservation Commission already with an approval, so we're here to petition, um, to, to enclose that component, uh, which is half of the, half of the side porch. And there's, in addition to enclosing that, there is a need for another little bit of square footage, so there's a, a three foot by three foot addition that is not within the porch footprint, but it is under a second floor cantilever, so it doesn't represent a reduction in open area, but it is more, more square footage.
Okay.
And that, too, is in the side setback. Uh, so that, in a nutshell, is what we're doing. Should I just go page by page real, real quickly? Um, so we hit the, the first page, we see photos, starting top left from the street.
Okay, I can throw you one second. I certainly apologize, but in case some of this information is relevant, I forgot to say a couple words before you started.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Regarding this, read relevant notices, and I apologize for the, step. There are no comments and concern received by the Howard's Police Department. As of July 9th, the Board of Health reported that when the current septic system was installed in 2000, the system required variances to setbacks and conditions replacing the structure that include no increase in square footage, habitable space, or number of bedrooms to the dwelling beyond proposed proposal as dated November 26, 1999. Therefore, the project will require Board of Health approval at a monthly meeting. And so you can certainly address that through your presentation. There are no other comments from other town departments or orders were received. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Did you, do you have that document? Are you aware of that prior stipulation?
No, I.
Okay, how did we get our hands on that piece of information? We didn't know that.
Okay, glad I brought it up.
Yeah.
Do we go to the Board of Health and they give us?
Yes, yes. So it, the key thing here is, I mean, again, I'm not speaking for the Board of Health, all right? But clearly, they're concerned about the number of bedrooms and so forth, that in that particular passing, being added on, all right? So that was a key thing. And, as well as, but there, it does stipulate habitable space. Uh, if you're increasing it, you need to get Board of Health approval. So I would contact them. So anything that, if we go forward and grant relief tonight and give you, you know, special permit, uh, there'll be a stipulation that you need to go before the Board of Health and get that resolved before the commissioner, Building Commission can, can issue a, a permit to go forward.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, so I'll go back, I was, I was starting to get into the photograph page, just to kind of get people oriented with the views. Um, so top left is from the street. See, there's a retaining wall with an elevated lawn in front of the house. To the right, just off, off of that picture is a driveway down to the lower level. So in the next picture to the right, you can kind of see, looking back to the street from the backyard, that, that driveway feature on the, on the side of the house. Um, the back is an elevated deck on column with outdoor space under it. Third picture on the top is also from the backyard, just kind of showing that overhang on the second floor that we're building a little bit of new space under. Um, and if you go to the middle bottom picture, that is the edge of that same porch, and the picture next to it is the entire porch with the cantilever beyond. So you can kind of see, you know, we're on the left side of the house, we're underneath the second floor, um, area, and we're, we're just hoping to add some interior space there. Um, there's a few other things we're doing as a result of conservation that I don't think are relevant here, but the outdoor shower enclosures you see are being removed. Um, and in the bottom center picture, the generator is being, well, is being removed, and we're proposing to put the pad further to the left for a potential future generator. Um, I'm gonna flip to the site plan. The road is on the left. This is the survey that was approved by confirmation. Um, so from Pilgrim Road, on the left, there's a pedestrian break in the retaining wall that would allow you to get to the front door or the side porch that is planned north. Um, and so if you do go to plan north, you'll see a shaded area that is the half of the porch we're enclosing, and to the right of that is the three foot by three foot additional bump out, um, that is not on the porch, but it is under the upper. So that's the area that we're here to talk about, um, today, where we're in that side setback. Um, if we flip to the next page, you'll see an existing plan where we're going to replace the foundations to enable supporting the new bathroom that will go in this bump out. Um, and you can kind of see the removal of that generator pad. I'm just gonna just kind of keep whipping through these. This is a very small part of the plan that's actually under discussion tonight. So page A05, the next page, um, shows the proposed new fittings under the, under this feature, and, um, not much else. So we'll go to the next page, A06, demolition of the first floor, just kind of shows removing the railings and moving the, the side door to a new location to make room for this bathroom. And then we'll go to A07, which is the proposed plan, where we finally see the bathroom itself that we're trying to add. Two motivations for it. One is the kitchen renovation, um, you know, the bathroom's in a kind of unfortunate place where it's taking up space that we need for circulation and kitchen, and the second is an agent in place concept where we would be able to, well, Brian and Jeannie, someday, if needed, would be able to live on one floor. Um, so to create a bathroom that will enable that future, um, possibility is, is the second reason that we're making it not just a powder room, but a, but a bathroom. Going on to the second floor, there's really nothing happening zoning relevant. There is a visible exterior feature on the right side. If we go to, um, on page A08, you'll see we're moving a little bit of the roof that faces the water side, which is the south. And on page A09, you see it's a, it's a balcony outside of those existing bedrooms that we're carving into the existing roof line. You don't believe that requires any relief, so it's a visible exterior element. We can flip a few pages to A11, where we'll see the exterior elevations. Um, again, this is just the whole house design, so some of these aren't really relevant to what I'm talking about tonight, but, um, drawing one at the top on the far right, you can kind of see from the backyard perspective, that porch, which is up a hill, um, which is why it looks like it's a story up in the air. Uh, so you see the basement down below, and then the first floor and second, and this bump out is on the first floor. Drawing two, you see the proposed. Uh, if we go to the next page, A12, you'll see a side view. This probably shows it best, so there's a porch with railings, lattice below the generator, um, and that overhang on the second floor, that's the whole length of the house. And then below, drawing two, you see half of the porch now enclosed and the generator gone. Um, so that is, that is what we're doing. That's what we're hoping to do. So I don't think the other pages really contain any material, uh, pertinent to this. The other sides of the house are on, on here also. I think that's it for the presentation. Open it up to any questions.
Okay. All right, so, uh, just to confirm, proposed project will only be adding habitable space on the current setbacks on the existing roof porch, and will not be adding any additional bedrooms, correct?
That's correct.
And, again, we already addressed it, need to get hold of Board of Health. What is your current time, what's your timeframe for the project, if we should get approval?
The desire is to build between now and the beginning of next summer, if possible.
Will, um, will construction vehicles be able to maintain on the, on the property, or are you going to be requiring vehicles to be on the street?
I can speak to that. The driveway's fairly sizable.
Yeah.
Fits almost three cars wide and probably three cars deep if it, if you were to size it that way, so.
Yeah.
There's a handsome no parking sign there, too.
Excuse me?
And there's no parking sign.
Correct. Yeah, so we're pretty, we're pretty sensitive to that, so I, I can't speak for the construction company, but they, they're well aware of it. There's also a project that's going to be going on across the street from us as well, same GC that's going to be doing their project, he's going to be doing ours. They also have a fairly lengthy driveway, so I would, I'd be hard pressed to think that they couldn't solve their truck needs within those two driveway.
Okay, all right. Typically, and, I mean, I'll be recommending it, but whether the rest of the board will go for it or not, so forth, is, you know, one, one condition, I would, I feel that because of the neighborhood, because of the, um, location to the, you know, to the beach area and so forth, that, uh, probably going to be requesting a time requirement, which is typically, uh, you know, for the summer months, we prefer that from Labor Day, oh, excuse me, Memorial Day or June 1st through Labor Day, that there's no outside construction going on. You know, if a house is buttoned up and so forth, and there's no outside construction, they can be working indoors, of course, but as far as exterior construction and demolition, um, I'll be making recommendation as far as, you know, for, for that, uh, for that additional condition. Okay. Uh, really don't have any other questions regarding the project? I think it's, uh, all conceived, but, Tim?
I have no questions.
No question.
No questions.
No questions.
And my only question is, what are you going to do with the new space? I think you've already answered that. It's going to be a bathroom, is that correct?
Yes.
That's the only question, comment I had, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Well, um, is there anyone in the audience, in the public, that would like to, to discuss this, speak to this, this case? Okay. Well, hearing none. He, will I have any additional questions to the applicant? Nope. Okay. Then I'd like to make a motion, I'd like to, I'd like someone to make a motion regarding to close public hearing. Do you have to assign, or do you have to post public hearing? Excuse me?
I'd make a motion to close public hearing.
I do that afterwards. Second. Okay. Okay. All those in favor of closing the public hearing? Okay.
Aye.
All right. All right, well, it, I'm going to assign the voting here for tonight. To Al, Al Donahue, David Nuttall, Tim Bailey, John August, and Kenneth Dixon, that will be voting in this case. Uh, any additional discussion regarding this case from the board? Okay. So, uh, the chair will now entertain a motion, um, to a closed discussion.
I'm moved.
Okay. Okay, Al. Vote to closed discussion.
Aye.
Aye. Lot of parliamentary procedures, I just wanted to.
That's okay. It's all for it.
Okay. I'd like to have, I'd like to ask the clerk to make a motion in the case.
Case number 2024-17, Jeannie McKenzie, uh, through Derek Bloom, um, has been granted a special permit for 11 Pilgrim Road, assesses map 7, parcel C3 in the RH1 zoning district. The applicant has been granted, and I've said this, a special permit, in a nonconforming structure uses, uh, 325 attachment to Table 2 area regulation to construct in addition to preexisting nonconforming yet dwelling pursuant to the Howard's zoning bylaws 32554 and MGL 48. Uh, there will be, during the life of the project, there'll be no demolition, exterior construction on new landscape between June 30, Labor Day of any year. For the life of the project, approval, project will construct, construction vehicles will be parked on the applicant's property and not on any public street. And violations of terms and conditions of this special permit may be enforced by violation of the Howard's zoning bylaw pursuant to general law 48, Section 7, and the Howard's zoning bylaw as these may be amended from time to time.
Um, I'd like to possibly offer amendment to that, but I just want to include that, on this case here, that granting is consistent with the Gale, Dietrich, and related cases. There will be an intensification of one or more existing nonconformities, no new nonconformity and no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood on a preexisting nonconforming lot, and as proposed, structure will not create any additional negative impacts with respect to traffic, noise, odor, and congestion. Any relief not expressly granted hereunder is hereby denied. Our work shall be performed in accordance with the plan submitted with this application. Said grant and approval are subject to the following conditions, which Al mentioned, regarding the, uh, conditions he mentioned. In addition to that, uh, the, uh, the granting of special permit is subject to the approval of the project by the Board of Health. Okay. Uh, the, with those revisions, could I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, okay. Would you like to have a vote in the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you all. Thank you so much.
Your permit is granted.
Thank you very much.
And, yeah, just see the Board of Health, just give them the buzz, and I'm sure, you know, we should be taking care of pretty readily driving.
Thanks for your time. Appreciate it all.
Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Good luck in your project.
Thank you.
Uh, case number 2024-18857 Orleans Road, Catherine M. Tar, through Marie, Mary Ann Rose. Property located at 857 Orleans Road, assesses map 51 parcel P-4-4 in the RML Zone 1 zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit for a, uh, from 32554 nonconforming structures and uses, 325 attachment to Table 2 area regulation to construct in addition to a preexisting nonconforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard's zoning bylaws 32554 and MGL Chapter 48, Section 6.
Okay.
Board of Health, let me read them in.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
The Board of Health has no concerns with regard to this project as the septic system was installed in 2023 and is approved for two-bedroom. The applicant is proposing a two-bedroom, two-bedrooms, rather. Project does not impact the septic system or setbacks. There's been no other comments from the town departments or orders that were received.
Okay, I'd like to have the applicant do his elves, and, anybody helping you out?
Just me.
Okay.
For the record, I'm Mary Ann Rose from Singer &amp; Singer in Dennisport. It's good to see you all tonight.
Thank you.
Um, there was one comment from the police department. They have no issues with this as well.
They have no issues, that's correct.
Okay, perfect. Um, so, I'm representing Catherine Tar. She's here in case there are any questions, along with her partner, for 857 Orleans Road, and we're asking for a special permit to alter and extend in a single-family dwelling that's already nonconforming as to the front setback, and one of the additions will go slightly further into that front setback. What I'd first like to do briefly is just establish what's existing, so you all can compare what's existing and what's proposed. The existing lot is nonconforming as to size. It's a little under 20,000 square feet, or 40,000 square feet's required, and the structure is nonconforming, as I've said, to the front setback. The covered front stoop is. we feel, two additions. There's an addition on the rear that's conforming, and so I'm not really going to talk about that, but there's an addition to the west towards the bike trail, and that is the one that needs zoning relief. It's going to be 19.7 feet away from the front set, from the front property line, so it's just .7 feet closer. And if you look at the elevations, you can see that this is a single, sorry, this is a one-story structure. It's going to continue to be a one-story structure. It's going to be slightly taller with that addition. It's, um, 13-something feet now, and it's going to be about 17 feet high, that part, part of it, that addition on the west side, relatively minimal. And again, with regard to coverages, still conforming. I think if you looked at the staff report, uh, there was a typo. The building coverage obviously is going to get a bit bigger. It's going to go, let's check out the numbers here. It's going to go from 7.4% to 12.5%. Uh, that's still conforming. Site coverage is going to go from 17.8% to 22.9%, where 25% is allowed, and the height is 14.4 feet to 17.1 feet, again, where 30 feet is allowed.
Uh, Mary Ann?
Yep.
Can you, I'm looking at the zoning, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but...
Certainly.
Looking at the chart.
Yep.
Again. Uh, on the rear numbers, what's the proposed number on the rear?
The proposed number, it's, I think that's, that's going towards the dwell, that's, the asterisk is for the dwelling, but it's 46.7.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, I just...
Yes.
But, so we're going from 20.5 to 46.7?
Yes.
I had the same issue. I, I think the issue is the 20.5 is the existing garage foundation?
That's the garage. That's the garage foundation.
Which is not moving, I see.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
So, right. So if you look, you can see the 65 to the existing dwelling, and it's getting a bit closer, but it's still conforming at 46 on that corner.
Oh, I see, okay, now I'm catching on, all right, yep.
That is a little confusing. Yeah, sorry about that.
Sorry to interrupt you, I'm not supposed to do that during the presentation.
It's all perfect. Okay, so we are seeking a special permit, um, in order to complete the work as shown on the plans. Relief is required because we are going a little bit further into that front setback, um, but we believe that that is, um, not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than, uh, what's existing, and we are not creating any new nonconformities. And so under Gale, we believe that you all have the power to grant a special permit in this case. Uh, briefly, I'll list the reasons why, in addition to what I've just said. I'll do the rundown. There's no change in the use of the property for permitted, single-family residential use. Again, no new nonconformities will be created. The coverages will remain the same, they'll be conforming, um, as will all the other setbacks other than the front setback. If you've gone by the property, you'll notice, uh, there's a lot of trees in the front of, of the yard. You might be curious as to whether any of those trees or some may be taken down. Uh, I've talked to my client, and one tree will be taken down where the addition is being done, but they actually really like having that screening in front. So again, we think that that's one of the reasons why. It's in kind of a funny neighborhood where the bike trail is one of its neighbors, and so...
Right.
Um, but there is a, a lot of screening there, and there's the will and really the desire to keep as much of that screening as possible because of the busy nature of that street. Um, as we've mentioned before, the number of bedrooms will remain unchanged, and you all have noted that the Board of Health has no issues with this, um, as well, and there's no conservation commission jurisdiction either, so there's no other departmental review that needs to be done here. Um, I've said that the coverages are remaining conforming. We believe this is a modest renovation. Um, if this could in other circumstances be a two-story home, this is not what they're intending to do. It's two additions that will make this much more useful, um, than it is now where they're living. We believe that there's adequate off-street parking for the continued residential use, and we do not believe there'll be any nuisance, hazard, or congestion, or any harm to the neighborhood created by this. For those reasons, we'd ask that a special permit be granted.
Thank you. All right, it's going to, uh, particular timeframe for the project?
Really very much hoping to do this in one hearing and have the permit reviewed while we're under appeal and start in the fall as soon as possible.
Oh, okay, all right, yeah. You say under appeal, okay.
All right, under, while the appeals period is, the 25th period is happening.
Right, okay. All right, so you're looking to start really soon as possible?
As soon as they can. They have a contractor lined up and ready to go in August, which might be a little sooner than we're able to...
Well, we'll try to get it recorded as soon as possible for you.
Thank you.
All right. Um, I'm assuming you can keep all contracted vehicles on the property. From looking at it, it looks like there's ample room to...
Yes, there's ample room. We've talked about that.
Right, and although I know once your, you know, desire to start things very promptly, even if not, um, I don't, I don't feel the fact this is a, a case where we need to have a, um, a timeframe, because it, you know, parking, speaking of parking, you know, anywhere in, plenty, there's plenty of parking on site, and I don't think it's going to be in that location a problem, you know, for summertime construction, although the, uh, the typical condition is for exterior construction and so forth. Well, you're going to be, hopefully you won't pass all that.
Yes.
Okay. Um, so I really don't, I think it's a fine project. I think you meet all the requirements as in the Gale and Dietrich cases, as, as you pointed out, and, um, so I think it, uh, that's where they really can.
No questions.
Other question, Mark Curiosity, is the, the stairs that go down from the second bedroom, is going down to a full basement?
Um, actually, I'll let Kathy answer that. Come right over.
Oh, no, no, you can come right to the front here. You're the applicant.
Okay, perfect.
Yes, there will be a full basement under the new construction on the side.
Is there a basement under the existing, uh, structure?
Yes, yes.
Will it tie into that, or?
It's, it's not going to be connected. It will be just next to it.
Okay, so it's a separate?
Yeah.
Okay. That's my only question. Okay, actually, I had one, I noticed a bulkhead back there. Is that being, uh, reimagined in a different location? The bulkhead in the back, or is that, is your addition going to...
Oh, the addition will be over that, yeah.
Be over the bulkhead?
Over the, the bulkhead area will be changed, yeah.
Okay, so you're putting the bulkhead elsewhere?
Yes.
Egress, okay, I thought so. Now, Al?
My question, excuse me, the only question I had was your garage, unrelated. How do you get in and out of that driveway?
In and out of the driveway and the garage?
Well, the driveway is, backs right out onto Orleans, onto the road.
Yeah, so how's...
Right, but there's a turnaround in front of the garage.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah, because it's impossible to back out onto 39, as you know, yeah.
Oh, certainly is, right.
Yeah.
I, I used that turnaround when I was at the property, so...
It's very handy. Eversource likes it, too. They pull in there a lot.
I have no further questions.
No questions.
No questions. I actually work for Eversource, so if that's becoming a problem...
I think I've met you before. I think you might have stopped by and asked if you could park a truck here. You're always welcome.
Thank you.
Do you want me to write that into the table?
Yeah, maybe someone's listening.
Okay. Um, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak regarding this, this case? Okay, all right. All right, hearing none in the public. Uh, Chair asks the applicant any final comments?
No, just if you would clarify who's voting on this?
I will in a moment.
Great.
So it, uh, so everyone knows that the town attorney recommended, I used to always indicate who was voting at the beginning of the case.
Right.
The, our town council has informed me I should be doing it after the, uh, open session has been closed.
Okay.
Okay, so that's why I'm out of order, but it's fine that you brought it up. Um, over her objections, I may go back to the old way at some point, but, uh, all right. Uh, might I have a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Second by Al. All those, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And, uh, voting. Okay, the Al, myself, uh, David Nutley, uh, John Argus, and Tim Bailey. And, uh, any additional discussion by the board?
The only other thing I would point out from, just from an administrative standpoint is I do think with the confusion on the rear setback, it really, for zoning compliance purposes, it is 20.5.
Okay.
It's still, it's still the building that's there.
Yes.
Even, um, and I think if you do something in the future...
That's...
You probably don't want it to say 46.
That's true. Okay, thank you. It does have asterisks with dwelling, but yeah, I think you're right.
That's my only question. Actually, the, um, with the asterisk there, if it wasn't there, I'd probably say maybe we need a new site plan.
Yeah, no, I think the asterisk clarifies it, but still, from a compliance for the lot, it's 20.5, with all the structures on the lot.
That makes sense.
Okay. Any other discussion by the board? Okay, so I'd like to, um, have a motion to close discussion.
So moved.
Okay, John, you have a second on that for someone? Al, was that you, Al?
Yes.
Okay. Vote to close discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Case number 2024-18, Catherine M. Tar, over attorney, Marion Rose. Um, property is located at 857 Orleans Road, Assessors Map 51, Parcel 4, P4-4, in the RML zoning district. The applicant has been granted a special permit from 32554 nonconforming structures and uses, and 325 attachment to Table 2, Area Regulation, to construct in addition to a pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaws 32554 and MGL Chapter 48. Granting is consistent with the Gale, Dietrich, and related cases, and there will be an, uh, intensification of one or more existing nonconformities. No new nonconformities and no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood on a pre-existing nonconforming lot, and as the proposed structures not create additional negative impact with respect to traffic, noise, odor, and congestion. Any, uh, relief not expressly granted here unto is hereby denied. Uh, all work shall be performed in accordance with the plans submitted with the application. Said grant and approval are subject following conditions. General...
No, we can skip that one.
Okay.
Yep.
Zip right on by this.
Right.
Okay, for the life of the project, uh, all construction vehicles will be parked on the applicant's property and not on the public street or road. A violation of the terms and conditions of the special permit may be enforced as a violation of the Howard zoning bylaw pursuant to GL, uh, Chapter 40A, Section 7, and the Howard zoning bylaws, as they may be amended from time to time.
Can we have a second?
Second.
All those in, uh, voting in favor of the motion?
Aye.
It is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
I, I bite by your house frequently.
I'll stop by sometime. I'll check out the new garage. It's beautiful. You can turn around there, too.
Okay, thank you. We're just taking a, we're going to take a brief break, just a few moments here until Tim from one comes back, in case if anyone else needs to, uh, take a break. Okay?
Can't. It has to be over 72 inches to be able to be sold.
Okay, so what do you estimate?
This is 62 inches.
Okay.
So I flay it up and give it to my friends. It's a lot of tuna.
Boy, I would think so.
I heard Mr. Dixon is quite the tuna fisherman.
Phil's wondering where his tuna is.
Thank you.
Mr. Crowe, you were a fisherman, weren't you, at one time?
Uh, when I was a lot younger, my brother and I did a lot of striped bass fishing, blue fishing down, uh, Red River, Herring River, where Belmont is. Trout fishing.
Oh, okay.
Then you have children.
You look like a fisherman.
Okay, it's 7:18. I'd like to call the session back into, back to order, and, uh...
All right, case number 2024-19, Thomas A. Cosmer, trustee Thomas A. Cosmer, uh, to 2012 family trust through their attorney, William Crowe. Property is located 23 Davis Lane, Assessors Map, Parcel N6, in the Arrow zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit or in the alternative, of variance from 32554 nonconforming structures, uses, and 325 attachment to Table 2, Area Regulation, to raise and replace a pre-existing nonconforming single-family dwelling pursuant to the Howard zoning bylaws 32554 and 52, Mass. General, uh, Chapter 40A, Sections 10 and 6. There has been no comments, uh, received from the police department. The Board of Health reported that the current septic was installed in 2011, eight bedrooms. The applicant is proposing seven bedrooms as of July 9. The project is pending approval at the July 16 Board of Health meeting.
It was approved.
It was approved. Okay. Get that ready?
Um, it, it's in the, the building department's, uh, report.
The historic...
I didn't, yeah, I didn't, okay.
The historic board secretary forwarded comments on, uh, the 29th, and I don't need that one.
Uh, just real quick, we, the board did receive comments from the historic board secretary. Um, then it was discovered that, uh, it was an error, and that the historic commission did approve the project back in December of '23. Okay.
No demolition delay. No demolition delay imposed.
Right, and, uh, so the comments of June 29th, 8th, that were on, in the record, were, were in error.
Thank you.
Okay, so the board of health reports no concerns regarding the project as proposed, with regard to the septic system being installed in, uh, installed in '23 and approved, uh, for a two-bedroom. The applicant is proposing two, proposing two bedrooms. The project does not impact the septic setback requirements. No other, no other departments have had any comments. Noah Butter's, uh, information was received.
The, uh, wanted a note on that, the, a notice of intent was submitted to the conservation commissioner. Hearing was scheduled for June 20th.
That happened.
Okay.
And they issued an order of conditions, and it's been recorded at the registry of deeds, and I have a copy of it.
Okay.
So we have conservation, board of health, historic, all have approved.
Okay. So, so we need no, um, conditions on that, those matters. Okay. All right, I'd like to ask the applicant and represent, introduce themselves and the people assisting you.
Thank you. Attorney William Crowe from Howard's Port, representing, um, the applicant this evening, who's Thomas Cosmer, um, and he's seated here this evening, and, uh, he's the trustee of the family trust that owns the property in question. I also have with me Mike Tartamella from Patrick O'Hearn Architects in Boston, who has designed the building that, uh, you have in front of you, the building plans and the aerial, aerial views, et cetera. So what we're, what the petitioner is proposing to do is to demolish and replace essentially two dwellings. They're, they're, there's a single-family residence and then a cottage that is a single-family residence as well. They've been rented out in the past as, as two dwellings, and he's going to combine them into one single-family residence so that there won't be two anymore. This is all per the proposed, uh, existing conditions and proposed dwelling, uh, plans by Ryder and Wilcox, dated June 19th, 2024, and the plans by Patrick O'Hearn and Associates. It's an oddly shaped lot in that it, it doesn't really have traditional frontage on a road. It's got 25.19 feet on Davis Lane, up where you see the septic system and driveway to get in, um, to the lot. But it doesn't really have frontage, um, if you want to call it frontage, it has 25.19 feet, which is nonconforming, pre-existing nonconforming, and, uh, the easterly setback, and this is an overlay on this plan, you don't get two plans, you get the overlay, one, the existing dwelling is in red, um, lines, and then the proposed dwelling is in solid black lines. So on the easterly side, the existing, you see in red, if you have it in red on your copies?
We do.
Okay, is 1.3, uh, feet from the lot line, and so that's going to be actually made a little bit better, almost a half a foot to 1.8 for the proposed garage, um, attached garage on the proposed dwelling. So it's pre-existing nonconforming, it will remain nonconforming, it'll get a little bit better at 1.8 feet. The rest of the setbacks and coverages are all conforming, but I'll just, and will remain conforming, I'll just run through them. The northerly setback is currently 33.9, you see in red, and it will decrease to 25.3. The 25.3 is hiding. It's at the jog when the septic system, when you see the septic system and it jogs to the west, and in black there it says 25.3. That's the distance from that right angle point to the, um, corner of the proposed garage. It's 25.3, it needs to be 20 in order to be conforming, so we're okay there. The westerly setback is currently conforming at 43.7, and it will decrease to 35.8, but still well above the 20-foot minimum. The site, the building coverage, which is, uh, 15% maximum allowance, is currently at 3.2%, and will actually decrease to 3.1%. How often do you see that? How often do you see somebody going from eight bedrooms to seven bedrooms instead of seven to nine? And so, we're, we're making things better. Going from two buildings to one, this is all, all good stuff. And then you have site coverage, 30% max, we're at 6.8, going up a little bit to 8.3. The building height calculations are on the plan, and we're going from 22.2 to 28.4, but as you know, 30, 30 feet is the max on that. So we've been to historic, um, and, uh, they approved it with no demolition delay. We have an order of conditions, so the conservation commission approved it, uh, and that's all been recorded and decisions issued, and the board of health had a variance on the property way back when and said you cannot increase the, the, um, living space, the habitable area, without coming back to them. So we did. Ryder and Wilcox went back, and that was approved on July, um, 16th. So we've been to all the other boards first on this one, and you're it, um, so you're the last piece of the puzzle, hopefully, for the petitioner. So our argument is that the new dwelling will not increase any existing nonconformities. It will maintain basically the nonconformity on the, um, easterly side, as I said, it will be 1.8 feet still from that lot line, but, um, it's pre-existing, nonconforming, and under the Gale case, we can intensify that with the, with the new garage, um, by a special permit. So we've obtained the required denial letter from the building commissioner, we've been to the other boards. As far as the special permit is concerned, uh, it's our contention, the petitioner's contention, that there will be no substantial increase in noise, fumes, odors, congestion, traffic, or the like. There will be no nuisance created, and there will be no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood. It's my understanding from the petitioner that the neighbor on the easterly side that would be most affected by this is in favor of this project. So, uh, we would ask that you grant the special permit this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I, uh, first of all, I think the project meets the conditions as, I mean, he qualifies things under the Gale and Dietrich cases, I, I think this is, uh, intensifications that have been done are minor, and, uh, has absolute good reasons to be approved. Just looking at the plan, just so I can learn and understand things a little bit. Everything you see and hear is front, east, northwest. What do you consider the rear? Which, which setback is the rear?
We're going by the top of the bank.
Okay, so the top of the bank?
So you see 23.1.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't see the proposed on the, on the compliance table. That's why I was just kind of confused looking at it.
Right, so Rachel, what Rachel said on her, Rachel or the compliance officer said on her report, um, on her table, is that she said, um, greater than 20 feet, greater than 20 feet. So she was satisfied with that. The existing setback,
23.
Is, um,
setback 20.
Is 12, is 12 feet, and we're improving that, we're making it better, we're going to be 23 feet to the patio. The structure's even more than that. Right.
They see, you see on the zone, on...
30 feet, 30 feet to the structure on the southwest corner of the proposed house. You see it says 30 feet to the top of the bank?
Yes.
So we're going from 12 feet to 30 feet. Patio will be ground level, so the structure itself would be 30 feet from the top of the bank.
I only point out here because I can't follow that on the table in the site plan.
You look at the southwest corner of the site plan, right at the corner of the structure?
I'm just, I'm looking at the table, and the numbers we're talking about, I can't find them on the table. That's all.
There's no south setback on the table.
Right, sure.
So I, I, it, just so it, if it's possible, I mean, and I, maybe this is not, but, uh, when this goes for permit and so forth, I would like to have the, the table on the site plan match up what's, what's going on, because I, right at the moment, they, I can't follow it. Now, maybe it's just me here, but I can't follow the compliance table on the site plan and what I see on the...
I don't know if it's a matter of following it, it's just not there.
It's not there, I mean, it's not, yeah.
It's, it's no confusion, it's not there.
It's not there, so...
If you look at the plan, it's there.
Right. Right, but, but I, I, I would like to have, I guess, the site plan that gets submitted for the building permit and so forth be updated with all the correct information.
I, I think what's going on here, too, is the property extends further down past the coastal bank, but we could just have Ryder and Wilcox add that. It's, it's, it's well over.
Well, it's, it's a ton.
That's would be, but, but yeah, we'll have a number put on it.
Sure. I just, I just would like to see the, the numbers that are on the, on the site plan, the drawing, to match with the compliance table.
It's high water.
Am I, is this on?
Understood, and we can do that.
Yeah, okay.
But the lot itself does not end at the top of the bank in this case.
Right, so I'm not quite sure, right, it, it...
489 feet further. So we're further than 20 feet from that lot line, wherever it is down there.
I, I agree, so and what's, I mean, I saw...
And I think that with, I think probably that's why Ryder and Wilcox didn't put a figure on, like,
Sure.
30 feet or whatever, because that implies that that's the lot line, it's not, it's the top of the bank.
Yeah, okay, I see what you're saying, so maybe when I'm asking for it, really isn't needed, is it?
I, I mean, technically, it's, it's a setback, right? But I don't think it's going to make any difference in the decision.
Well, no, I don't, no, no, I'm just looking at, making sure that the...
Yeah, that, that setback in particular is absolutely in compliance.
Well, right, that, uh...
All right, so it's, all right, so let's, we can...
I, I have other setback questions, so.
Okay, all right.
I mean, we could put 500 feet on there, or 490 and 530.
At this moment, Bill, I may not be required to change it.
Thank you.
All right, so it's, uh, um, and what is the timeframe projected for the project?
They're hoping to start in September and, um, have the project weather tight, um, by June 30th. And they know that, the petitioner knows about the usual conditions that you impose and so forth, and, and that's fine.
Yeah, keeping all the...
From June 30th to Labor Day.
Yeah, I, I think that's just because of the location and the, that'd be required, as well as, um, I mean, it's a private road, but I'd like to see the fact that all vehicles are maintaining the property as, as...
You think we can get them all? We can get them on there. Construction, okay, all right. Park down Snow Inn, there's plenty of room down there, Witchman Harbor Club.
The, uh, though it's, just on a side note, from traveling down there, it, um, I was kind of smiling when I was driving down Bayview, I mean, I hadn't been down that far before, and to see a tree in the middle of the road.
Yes, there is, yes.
You know, it's a...
It's a little hairy in the winter, too, with the...
Now, is, is Bayview there, is that a public road or is that private?
I believe that's public.
I think it's public, yeah.
Yeah.
So I was just kind of surprised to see, you know, that the town's maintaining a, a maple tree in the middle of Bayview.
It's clearly a pointed discussion when we have visitors or family come from out of state, and they look at that tree as they're driving down Bayview, they just can't comprehend it, in the middle of the road.
Yeah, no, it's, uh, I'm glad, it was, it was great to see, I mean, that was, that was, that was pretty good.
Don't try to take that tree down.
Oh, no, no, not, you know, it's a, I can appreciate that. Okay, well, I'll, Ken?
No questions.
Okay, John?
The proposed pool, I'm assuming in-ground?
Mm-hmm.
That's an integral part of this project and permit? So as a structure, shouldn't the compliance table reflect the distances to the pool and not to the house on the relevant sides?
Well, it's separate from the structure itself.
But, uh, in-ground pool is considered a structure.
Considered a structure, but it doesn't impact the, the structure itself, the dwelling unit. It's not attached to the dwelling. Separate permit even.
Well, that's what I'm saying, are you going to pursue a separate permit for the pool, or are you considering it part of this project?
Great question.
Well, it's both, but that's why I asked Ryder and Wilcox to show, they hadn't shown the distance from the corner of the pool to the, to the boundary line, the westerly boundary line, and asked them to show that distance so that if a question like this came up...
Yeah, I think it'll still be compliant, and I, it's a beautiful project, but I, um, I do, you do need a pool permit, I know that, you'll have to pull a pool permit.
Right. And I don't think it would qualify as being our westerly setback to our proposed structure.
For this, right, but in the pool permit, they're going to have to prepare a different compliance table, right? Which is then going to show a structure 2.5 feet.
Right, it's a structure, yes.
I just want to make sure we're all aware that it'll be different.
That's why I had them change the plan and put that figure on there, because I didn't want to be, uh, sitting here without the answer to that question.
And the other, uh, just as a point, uh, and we joked a little bit at the beginning of the meeting, I would, um, as an advice, make damn sure that shed is exactly 99 square feet.
I said, I want to know, I asked them to put that on, too.
It's 99 square feet, I would make sure of it.
99.
What is the setback from that, that shed, by the way?
It shows, I had them show 5.2 on the plan.
Yeah, it's five feet, but it's 99 square feet.
Trying to, Pine Harbor. Dodge the bullet here.
And final, just to prove that I do read the plans, how, how did the average grade plane between the existing and the proposed change by .1 foot?
You got me on that one, I'm not a topography guy. Well, looks there right now is fairly low, and, yeah, there, I mean, there's some subtle grade change that will happen, and it's part of the excavation foundation work.
Because I thought the average grade plane calculation was for the whole lot, right?
It's, you, you take it from there. I'd probably have to ask David how we came up with that.
Yeah, I just didn't, I thought it would...
Might have been a rounding.
Yeah, I thought it would be the same number on both of them.
You know, further down the decimal points, just on how it was rounded.
None of them would affect my vote, but I just...
Tenth of a, tenth of a foot.
Tenth of a foot, yeah, I couldn't figure out why it was different.
It's all right, Mr. August, we, we're satisfied with a, a, a very expensive project, that the only, the only point of attention would be a two-inch, uh, change in grade.
It's a beautiful project.
Well, I have no questions.
No questions.
No questions.
Just a note for going forward, Bill, I'm Attorney Crowe.
Yes.
Regarding the shed.
Yes.
I, again, this is strictly an opinion and so forth, but I spoke to the building commissioner regarding, um, the former building commissioner, how sheds should be sized.
Right.
And, um, we had a determination, and he felt the fact that the, the shed is based upon the pad that it's built on, okay? So that actual pad of the shed is the foundation, and just like any house foundation, there's always a siding, it's the setbacks to the foundation, you know, to the, you know, to the, to pouring, you know, the, the cement. And then, when you put on your shingles and everything else, of course, that's, extends out an inch or two or whatever. He views it as the measurement should be based upon the foundation of the shed, which is the pad, which, you know, the 2x4s go on, and then now you have the exterior.
He's considering the pad a structure. That's how most jurisdictions do it.
Right, he's considering the pad as a...
Your neighbor to the east does not, but...
Right, it, he considers, he considered the pad as a foundation. Just like the foundation...
Just like the foundation of a house.
Because you do an house build.
And so, the, the fact that, there might've been a previous case on this discussion, the, the actual pad of the foundation was under a hundred square feet.
So, I was here last month, I was here last month for that.
That was on the former, that was on the former building commissioner.
Yes.
Okay, so, so that, if ninety-nine is the foundation, great, if it's the exterior, fine, but that's how he viewed it, okay? Of course, he's no longer with us, and the, the code of the town does not say anything regarding, on the shed permit, of what determines the square footage. So he looked, he looked at it as the foundation of the shed, okay? Al, you have no questions, Dave, you have none, and, okay, Jim.
Thank you for pointing that out, because we don't want to buy a prepackaged shed and then have it be inches too large, and then we're having to push it back to be twenty feet from both lot lines.
Right, and I met, I met with the shed company in Howard's, and, and to understand how they are doing their square footage, and it was based upon the pad that the shed goes on.
All right, good to know, thank you.
So that, it was ninety-six square feet, when the stuff could put on the outside, it was more than ninety-six square feet. You know, for, you know, for the shingling and so forth, so.
Extended beyond the pad, is that what you're saying?
Of course it does, I mean, like, like, shingling and siding extends beyond the foundation of a house. Same, he looked, he looked, Jack Mead looked at it that way, in the review of it.
From the, the other components that were added to the shed on the outside of it, not the pad?
Not the pad.
No, no, Jack, Jack said to ignore the other items.
Ignore those.
Yeah, just the-
You're strictly going by the pad itself, the foundation of the shed is the pad, you know, the-
The two inches of cladding that are added around it are not added to the-
Okay, that's where you confuse me, because I thought, I thought, I understood it as the pad-
The pad.
And not-
Correct. You go by the, the former building commissioner goes by the pad.
What happens if there's no pad? What happens if it's on four cinder blocks?
Well, you still have, you still have the foundation, something's going on top, some, the two-by-fours are going on top of something.
Yeah.
So whatever that platform is-
Okay.
For the shed.
Okay.
When I say pad, I mean platform.
Okay.
So whatever the platform is for the shed- he considers the foundation. Now, he's no longer with us.
Right.
Okay?
He's not dead.
He's not dead, he's still there.
Has there been a conversation otherwise in, in the building inspector's office? I understand that there was a case, but has there been a conversation otherwise in the town? Because that would-
The, the actual-
The, the challenge was that a surveyor measured differently in a previous, previous case.
Right.
Yeah, I can tell you where that happens.
So the, the platform, the platform of the, again, we're getting off of, you know, I'm not trying to get into another case, but the platform of the shed is what-
Understood.
The building commissioner was considering as the foundation.
Understood, we'll go with that for now.
Okay, so.
Until a new building commissioner says otherwise, we'll assume-
Right, and the actual code doesn't, doesn't specify how the measurement is done.
Good, yeah.
Change houses, too.
Okay, all right, so.
All right.
Story, I was thinking to it. Do we hear, are there any comments from the audience that, okay, I wouldn't think so? All right, hearing no comments, or, you know, anybody stepping forward, uh, the, I'd like to recommend that we close the open session.
Still moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye. Case number-
Oh, I gotta sign voting now.
Oh, that's way too long.
All right. Voting this case would be Al, Dave Nuttley, Tim Bailey, John August, and Ken Dixon. Uh, is there any further discussion by the board?
No.
No.
So I'd like to entertain a motion to close discussion.
Still moved.
Second.
Vote on closing discussion?
Aye. Aye.
Okay, Al, now you're up, I'd like to ask a motion from the clerk, please.
Case number twenty twenty-four dash nineteen, Thomas A. Cosmer, trustee for Thomas A. Cosmer, twenty-twelve family trust through their attorney, William Crowe. The owner has been granted, uh, let me just go through the whole thing. Owner has, the property is located twenty-three Davis Lane, it says his map, eighth parcel nine, uh, N six, in the Arrow's zoning district. The applicant has been granted a special permit for three twenty-five fifty-four non-conforming structures uses, three twenty-five attachment to table two area regulations, to raise or replace a pre-existing non-conforming single-family dwelling pursuant to Howard zoning bylaws three twenty-five fifty-four and fifty-two in MGL chapter forty, A, section six. Granting is consistent with the Dale and Dietrich related cases, as there may be intensification of one or more existing non-conformities. No new non-conformity and no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood and pre, on pre-existing non-conforming lot. And as the proposed structure will not create any additional negative impacts with respect to traffic, noise, odor, or congestion. Any relief not expressly granted under, hereunder is hereby denied, all work shall be performed in accordance with the plans submitted with the application. Said grant and approval are subject to the following conditions.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna do all these, all three.
Yeah. During the life of the project, there'll be no demolition, exterior construction, or new landscape between June thirtieth and Labor Day of any year. That for the life of the, life of the approved project, all construction of vehicles will be parked on the applicant's property and not on any public street or road. A violation of the terms and conditions of the special permit may be enforced as a violation of Howard zoning bylaws pursuant to them, to general law, forty-eight, section seven, and Howard zoning bylaws, as these may be amended from time to time.
Do we have a second? Second. Second by John. Hey, John, I'd like to see your vote on the motion, please.
Aye.
Okay, it's fully approved, five nothing.
Thank you very much.
You have a special permit.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Attorney Crowe?
I wasn't here last month, no story on Davis Lane, nothing, no history down here?
Don't get him started, Dave.
I haven't heard a story in like four months, I missed it.
I had, apparently the story I told last month was forgettable, but-
I forgot about it, no, I told him about Tip O'Neill's house and- I remember that, I went home and told my wife.
And he says, you weren't here last month, where are you, Attorney Crowe? Well, that story went over big.
Wait till we're in the small room for the story.
You don't know who planted the tree in the road.
I will, I will tell you that at the base of the, at the end of the lot here, right, that-
I knew it.
I'm gonna use the fish.
At the base of the lot, the, the ocean, does, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, there's a cliff here, sort of, okay? The ocean in the old days used to come to the base of the cliff.
Sure, all the accretions happened because of the jetty, the outer jetty, that was put in, what, seventy, eighty years ago on Wichmen Harbor? It's sort of exasperated the push of the sand towards Bank Street. So, uh, we have, we pick up three or four feet a year in terms of accreted sand.
Thompson Brothers loved it, every year, they, that's how the Wichmen Harbor Club got built.
Oh, yeah, no, it's, yeah.
So the, the, the deal, the deal is that my father was the one that was, when he was fifteen, backed the dump truck out onto the jetty to dump the rocks to build that long jetty back in the thirties, and I said, well, how do you, why? And he says, I was fifteen, I was the only one crazy enough to do it. So, that, but that jetty has created all of that, and it's skewed everybody's property lines and all of that, because you own out into the water, and, uh, so anyway. It used to come to the base of that, uh, and that's Merkel Beach down there, that's a public beach down in there.
Howard Rockwood, who owned Rockwood on Davis Lane, his grandfather, who invented the sprinklers up in Worcester, um, he would tell stories, and he would cast a fly rod from the backyard, from where we are, right into the water. Now you can't really get there with a three, three-wood. Unless you're really good. You can hit golf balls.
Well, gentlemen, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Perfect, thank you.
Always gets, gotta be ready with something, you know?
Thank you, gentlemen, good night.
Okay, just wanna check, does anybody need a break? Okay. So next step up is approval of minutes. From the last meeting.
Make a motion to approve as printed.
Second.
That was pretty quick. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, new business. Uh, first of all, um, just that John August is not, sworn in as a full member. That took place last, at the end of, end of the month?
Middle of last week.
A couple weeks ago, okay.
Can you attest to that?
What?
Just wanted to be able to attest to that.
Yeah, you can, he, I'd get-
I had to, I had to raise the hand all over again.
Okay, so we need to vote on reorganizing the board. First up with chair, I'm, I'm happy to serve another year as chair, if anybody wants to nominate me.
I move to nominate.
Okay. All right, Al and, and Ken? All, all those in favor?
Aye. You're doing a great job, by the way.
Well, well, thank you, I appreciate it. I'll even put down six zero, I voted for myself, okay? Okay. And next up is position of clerk.
I'll nominate Al, Donahue, to serve another year as clerk.
Al, you ready to, you wanna accept that position?
Sure, I'll accept, thank you, Ken.
Second.
Second.
Ken and, and Dave? All those in favor?
Aye.
Did you vote for so?
I did.
Okay, yes, okay, so I'm gonna make sure I got the record, right, no one's here. All right, um, old business, actually-
Will we just continue on a new business, just for a moment?
Oh, sure.
With regard to the board, uh, some of us, not to mention any names, are getting older, and consequently, um, in the past, there's been an effort made to get younger people on the board for the, particularly for the clerk's job, and I enjoy doing it, I really do, and I appreciate it. And I, I'm, I'm very satisfied with the chair, but if anybody would consider at some point having themselves nominated for one of the positions, it might be beneficial to all.
Sure, I understand.
Thank you.
But not this year.
Not this year, I got a cover, thank you.
Yeah, regarding that, I had a discussion with, uh, Tom Angel last night, you know, at a meeting, and requested, again, discussion, we, it's obvious that we're gonna have a couple of, at least one forty, forty-B coming up this year. Right, and expect that to happen. Is it, huh?
This one, either that one, or?
Yeah, well, that one's the first one, Paul. Okay. I have, I have concerns that with, with just a board of seven, trying to get through the whole process of forty-B, maybe, I may be tight, and I've requested, you know, another alternate to be assigned, and I have done so for, since the beginning of the year, that I knew that, that Dave was going to be, be here. The, uh, so far, we've had no, no one to step forth in the town, and the town is, really just been lacking, you know, some people volunteering for committees, you know, to begin with.
They just, they just sent another email this week, requesting people.
I didn't see that email. What, what did you, um?
It may be because I hold a business license.
I see, okay.
Has there been anything in the Chronicle, I haven't seen anything that said we're looking for-
No, no, but they, they don't, so, there's a new website, and when it after came out, because before, when they designed the website, um, last year, I recommended that the front page of the website have an obvious line item, you know, um, for town committee and board positions. You know, just promote the fact of involvement of the town.
Yeah, actually, I, I'll revise that, it was actually the Howard Conservation Trust that sent it out.
Okay.
And down on the bottom, they had a link that said, click your application to join eight, any town committee.
All right.
To try to get people to engage.
Joe recommended the fact that, you know, I, you know, not to, myself as chair, you know, promote on any type of website, or, you know, whatever town page and so forth, you know, you know, FaceTime would advertise this situation. But anyways, the new, the new website came out, and it did not include that. Joe, Mr. Powers feels that, that was a mistake, and they're trying to look into, you know, correcting, correcting that to promote, you know, to get more. It, uh, I had, uh, I think it's, and I mentioned it to, at the selectmen's meeting, when I was commenting about Dave Ryer's, uh, time on the board, you know, recommend the town do more to, to promote people that, particularly a long-time people that, you know, have spent time with the, you know, with the town boards and so forth, just to give it, you know, more credibility, and, and, because I think, you know, I think overall, from other committee members that I've spoken to, with, you know, other town boards and so forth, uh, those serving on town committees have been, you know, you know, generally overall, you know, fairly satisfied with, with their involvement with the town. There's obviously, you see a couple situations where there has been some issues, you know, don't, don't need to get into it, but in, in, in the whole realm of all the people, all the boards of our, it's, it's been a minor, minor thing. And, um, overall, I think everyone, I think perhaps you guys as well, I know I do, get satisfaction over my participation on the committee, okay? You know, it, uh, you know, after two years as, as chair, I feel like I've finally given everything that's, that's required, I've, I've finally got a, you know, a handle on what's going on, and, because it takes time, and you need to get committee members on board, particularly our committee and some of the others in town, which is a lot, is a big learning curve. And particularly in our committee with a forty-B coming up, uh, we need to get people on board to begin that learning process before there's a key case that we have to, that we get involved with. So that's, that's my, if anyone on the board here knows of someone who might be interested in, in serving, you know, please reach out to them and suggest they, they call the town, uh, the town secretary, actually, according to, uh, Mr. Powers, has a list right out of her telephone of, of, of opportunities, and so they can direct somebody, you know, promptly, they like to get involved, so.
Yeah, the application is on the new website, to serve on a board or committee, it's just not prominent.
You just can't find it.
It's within, it's in all the other applications, it's with, it's in place, all the other applications.
You, you gotta go do it.
Yeah, but it's not a prominent, hey, we need some money type of thing.
Right, I, I think, I think that people would say, you know, they, you see if you got some, you know, oh, you know, some openings here, maybe I'll like to serve. But unless we advertise- the openings, people aren't going to come forward.
Maybe we should do a commercial.
Well, we're on TV right now, go ahead, Dave, it's all yours, you know?
I'm thinking a song and a dance, man.
Possibility, you know?
Choreograph.
Yeah. So, that's, enough of that, but, all right, so on to old business, I discussed it during the last case, what the, I didn't, I was gonna discuss this, what Jack Reed's, I mean, Jack Neid said about how he want, how he thinks, you know, sheds be evaluated. So, right now, it's, it's going with that. I think in your packets, you were forwarded, given a copy of the shed permit, or at least the line items for how it's done, and nothing's mentioned, you know, in there regarding how sheds are measured, okay? So, it, it leaves it open, and that was Jack's, Jack's interpretation, which I think makes a lot of sense if we do it based upon the foundation, pad, or platform, whatever, that's used by a shed. Okay?
Is it appropriate to ask whether any pending cases were advised of that?
Okay, actually, yes, I did.
Because I think it, it makes a significant difference.
No, no, I did, and the, I, I did advise, I spoke to Attorney Knopf Ross, and advised him that I had met, you know, with Pine Harbor, and the owner, and to, you know, how he does his sheds. On his, on their actual plans, he shows, you know, the measurements going from the outside for, is, you know, for eight by 12.
Right.
But the eight by 12 that he actually is the, that he uses, that, that is, that is based upon the, the platform that the shed's built on. And so I did, I did relay that to Attorney Knopf Ross, and he's, he's been so advised. But I did point out to him that, and I, I don't think it's inappropriate for me to, you know, mention this and so forth, is that it was absolutely his call, but should in a butter, you know, appeal the situation based upon the exterior measurements of 102 that they found, that he might, it, you know, I felt that the, as I gave my personal opinion, that I thought the board would agree with my perspective, that it is, is under 100 square feet based upon the foundation or the platform. But should there be a disagreement on that by in a butter, he might consider including that in, in a variance request. So that we, we actually would grant a variance of the 100, of that to show the fact that we're considering it, you know, exterior, exterior, you know, the exterior measurements were basically about 102, we're granting a variance to be able to, to a setback of five feet. I said, but I also said to him that when you reconvene the case on the continuance, it isn't to say that the, you know, board members wouldn't change their mind and you leave it where it is. And so I'm not, you know-
Well, my thought it might be cheaper for the applicant to get a revised drawing than to try to relocate a shed that's likely already full, you know?
No, but, but I think, I think that the, the current shed, I don't get in the case here, but we basically, to be conforming, he needs, he, a conforming shed needs to be five feet, that's, that's one viewpoint. But regardless, I did advise Attorney Knopf Ross, I don't want to get discussions regarding the case, but I did advise him regarding what Jack Neid said, you know, about the, how he would measure a foundation, and that if he felt it was necessary to protect the interests of his client, to discuss a variance if he thought that was important for him going forward.
Brian, just outside of this being the specific discussion on a shed from a previous case, are we allowed to grant a higher level of relief than what they apply for, or do they have to re-advertize?
Well, he applied for it.
He applied for a variance?
He's, he's, he has in there, in, in the alternative of variance.
Excellent, so that was my question.
Yeah, because it, yeah.
Otherwise, he's got a repulse, and it's a new case.
Otherwise, he would have to re, I told him he did not need to re-advertize a case because he has in there, in the alternative of variance.
Very good, thank you. Okay.
I believe, actually, the agenda's right there, just double check the top there, what it says on, on their case.
Seeks a permit or the alternative of variance.
Right. So, since he has it in there, he would not need to, to do anything, you know, and should be, he wanted to ask for it. Okay, so, but, again, so, you go forward, you know, so you're gonna review the whole case again, and regardless what straw votes it might have been, it's maybe a whole new day.
I would suggest, just to kind of close the shed discussion, it's yet another thing to add to that list of when they get around to revising the zoning regulations, they bring some clarity.
Yes.
To the measurement process.
Yeah, I mean, this type of situation won't come up for another 10 years.
Right.
Okay.
Until the pool gets built, I mean.
Okay. In addition to old business, I've got no correspondence of briefings to discuss, and it is 8:07, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Nope. Aye.
Okay.